And it's July 11th. Okay, we're ready?
Are you ready?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting for the Deschutes County Board of County Commissioners, July 11th, 2022. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, our first action item, item number one, is coming from Sarah Crosswhite and Jonathan Spring. So if you'd like to join us.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Sarah Crosswhite, Deschutes County 911 Director.
Jonathan Spring, Technical Services Manager, Deschutes County 911.
Okay, I'm not sure which one's on your agenda first. Is it Harris or Raycom?
Radio sites with Harris.
Harris.
First, perfect Harris.
For $440,000, $104,009.
So this is our L3 Harris project. This is our contract. And this is for, they're the vendor of our system equipment and provider of the services for our staging and testing, as well as our limited, I forget what I wrote there, in something support. Jonathan may know that answer. But so this is the next part of our project for our enhancement project. So we have our three sites that I've spoke to you guys about from our enhancement, long-term radio enhancement plan. And this is for the procurement of the equipment to go in these sites. So right now, we are ready to go. We're prepared. We just need to get the approval from you and your thoughts on this, questions, before we proceed. And once we do that, that'll be our next step in line. Hopefully, right now, we're looking at a long-term, six to nine months for the equipment. So once we do get it signed, our first order of business is going to get the equipment on order so that we can get these next three sites up and running, hopefully by the end of our fiscal year. That's kind of our goal right now.
So you're thinking like next, by June 30th of 2023?
I think that would be a good goal, yes. Yeah.
So everything you're ordering, is it made in America?
I do not know. John, do you?
I don't know off the top of my head either.
Well, it's a whole menu of items. Some of that stuff here is, but not, maybe not everything.
Yeah.
I mean, I was just, you know, wondering, are we waiting for chips from China or?
That's a good question. I hope not. It could take a while, from what I hear.
Well, and I was looking, so attached to the agenda has, it says Deschutes County Service District, three-site addition from LC Harris. First page, it says confidential information. So I don't know, was this attached to the agenda item publicly or not?
We removed that.
Yeah, okay, good.
Initially uploaded for about an hour or two.
Yep.
And it was caught and it was unuploaded.
And I'm just acknowledging, yeah, it's got makes and models and parts and descriptions and all the pieces here. So I can see that basically, yeah, setting up a rack and just getting each item that goes in that rack. And I'm sure there's something will be in there that'll be a longer lead time than other items. But being able to get it on order, making sure that, you know, the package is complete. And it sounds like a good point in time to be able to make that order because then we'll just, yeah, work with them as fast as we can, I'm sure.
We're excited to get to this point. I think, you know, we came out with our long-term enhancement in March of 2021 and presented that. And then we started slowly moving on it. And with COVID and different things, it just, you know, the process was really not fast-moving. And then we got to this point now where we've got everybody engaged. And so now we're to this point and it's like, yep, we can keep moving. So that's great.
Well, and having it on order is going to kind of empower us to, okay, understanding, you know, the site itself, the tower, the backup power, just all the different parts and pieces that need to be around it. So now we can really start aiming at the package, the final package.
And this is in our 710 budget. So this was budgeted in our fiscal year 22 budget. And then we carried it over for fiscal year 23. So we do have it in our 710 budget for technology improvements.
Commissioners, I'm not sure if we, but we are convening as governing body for 911 for these two matters.
Oh, you know what?
There we go.
And we didn't, it wasn't on our agenda.
Yeah. Well, I think we can imply you are, but you might want to make that clear from the record that we are.
Okay, we are convening as, yes, 911 right now for the next two matters. So just to correct the minutes, please. Sharon?
I'm sure she'll get that. So as I say, in support of the project plan that we've done even to get to this point, I'll move approval, board signature of document, document number 2022-639, L3 Harris proposal for Deschutes Counties approving the proposal for three additional radio sites. Second?
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
Commissioner Hua Chang?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So yes, I did highlight the thing that said confidential. So that's good that it got pulled.
I gave Megan kudos for that. I came running up in a tither on either, I forget, it was Thursday or Friday morning when I saw it. And she just took it down immediately for us, so.
Right.
I guess one question I do have about this is, so, I mean, Harris is, we contract Harris. They're managing this project. How much, like, so that means that the 911 staff is not having to, be onsite and coordinate equipment arriving and things like that. But how, once you sign a contract like this, how much, how much work is there for the 911 staff in the actual installation, construction, all of that?
We're really there in assistance to Harris. And then the next document is actually specific to the project management over the installation at the site itself. So specific to the Harris, Harris is just the hardware procurement portion of what we're there for. I can speak more to the Raycom piece, which is the next document when we get there, or if it's okay, I can talk about it right now. Basically, yeah, Raycom comes on and they take the equipment from Harris, set it up and install it in the site. So they hire the tower crew to get up on the tower. And we're essentially there just as a liaison or an assistant to them when they're there. But they're the ones who are on the show getting it installed.
And, and so, I mean, does one of you have to be onsite?
Our radio team will be there. So our radio manager and probably one of the site crew from our group will be there.
On our last tower, I think our supervisor would check in like daily with whoever was onsite, the contractor, make sure everything was going smoothly. And then towards the end, he was there a lot more frequently, spending more time there just to make sure all the loose ends get tied up at the very end of the project. But yeah, there's about daily involvement from at least one person on staff.
We also have standing weekly meetings with all parties involved, so.
But I'm sure it's going to be valuable just to kind of see it going into, having some onsite local knowledge about which wires going through which wall to which rack. I'm sure, and it's well documented, but just kind of seeing it happen. So you understand what's coming through the floor, through the wall, through the ceiling, power loads, air conditioning, security, all kinds of different things.
Correct. Yeah, we take a very close look at the as-builds as they go all throughout that process.
And we also take a lot of pictures because it's exciting event to memorialize for us, you know. And for the staff that never would ever go out to a radio site, I always can send them progress pictures to all the dispatchers going, see, this is, you know, here's our radio enhancement, here's the tower, and here's where we're at. Because I mean, otherwise, they would never see any of our towers or our sites or know anything about it. So it's always good to keep them in the loop as well.
But they, but they know that you're, that you're working on making sure there will never be a dropped call.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's good for them, you know.
Do you have any other questions specific to the Raycom one? I know we kind of started it off a little bit different, but yeah.
Yes, we're now on item number two?
Yeah, document number 2022-638. And this is just that our Raycom will be our onsite provider and our project managers for the three sites upcoming, so.
For a cost of $257,850, correct?
Yes.
If there's no other questions, I can make a motion.
Okay.
Move approval of document number 2022-638, a statement of work for Raycom site expansion.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Devon?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for joining us.
Yeah, just one question. Yeah, I didn't want to lose track of the vote because we'll see where this goes. But so when we add a site, it's going to be in the mix of the other sites around the county and the state system also. And then there's that kind of interference and, you know, constructive interference and overlap and power signals. Where's all that design work happening? Or is that already done?
Our engineer has done a lot of that already. So one of the sites specifically has to do with the site balancing between us and the state. So as soon as that one gets lit up, we'll be double-checking those numbers to make sure what they had is accurate and then redressing it with the state.
So yeah, okay, so the starting design for all that is in place.
Correct.
And then after that, you just make sure it does what we expect it to do and maybe slightly adjust it.
Correct. Yeah, I think there's a portion of the Raycom contract that has the ATP, that's the acceptance test parameters. So that's where we go over and review all those numbers.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us in person. And let's hope that some of those people, we get some more employees.
Be watching. I'm excited, so.
I know, I know. I'm excited too. I will be so happy if I can help make a difference.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I would now, as Chair, like to reconvene as the governing body for Deschutes County. And we have item number three on our agenda, which is the Treasury and Finance Report for May 2022. And Wayne Lowery is in the room. So thank you, Wayne, for joining us.
Thank you. Thanks for the introduction. And it's good to be with you all again. This is kind of like old times again.
It is like old times, isn't it?
So you have the May financial report and the Treasury report. There's really three things in there. There's some investment information on the portfolio. There's the budget to actual through May for a selected, selection of funds throughout the county. And then there's the vacancy report, which we added some years back as it became important. And that's in there as well. So what I'd like to do is just talk briefly about the investment side of things. And then I'll see if you have any questions on the budget to actual. The thing about the budget to actual, it's through May. It's pretty old information at this point. And, you know, we're approaching the audit process, so we're trying to close out the year end. And so really, the May, the May report kind of generated that resolution you all saw on June 22nd for budget adjustments. We'll talk about that briefly. But it becomes less relevant as we kind of move through time. I think we'll be, you probably won't see the June information until about August. And by then, we'll be talking about the August year-to-dates and how that looks compared to budget for the new year. So we'll have a summer here where nobody has to really talk about financial stuff. But then we'll move right into it in August.
For about six or seven weeks. But that June report will be the end of a fiscal year too. That's why it's a bigger.
Right. Right. And we'll get our pre-audit numbers to you in August. And that'll give you a pretty firm picture. And then, of course, the audit will finish that off later on.
And that's where the ending balances are kind of finalized more, which really are the beginning balances for the next year.
Right. And we'll go through all that in August, in the pre-audit there. So.
When will we see then the July numbers?
In August, we'll, well, in August, we'll do a July budget to actual.
Okay.
Start the new year. And then we'll try to give you some June preliminary numbers.
Okay, that's kind of what I was remembering.
Yep. So just some perspective. I, I found this kind of sun-damaged report. This is from May of 19. So this is kind of the last report I gave you. And that's just to give you perspective in time.
It's all yellowed.
It's all yellowed, yeah. So interestingly, the LGIP in that. It's all yellowed, yeah. So interestingly, the LGIP in that report in May of 19 was paying 2.75, so 2.75%. Today, the pool is at, well, in May, it was at .90.
And that was coming up from, yeah, and 2.7, yeah, because it was.
That's quite a, I mean, that's quite an increase since March. The portfolio yield at that time was 2.55. Today, it's about .57.
Yes. Just think of all that investment.
And then, here's the one I think is the most meaningful that most people don't really think about, and that's the interest earnings each month. For May of 19, it was over $400,000. For May of '22, it's $123,000. So huge difference there. And if you annualize that difference, that's like 3, $3.4 million. It's a huge resource that we've been missing out on the last couple of years, just because of COVID and the pandemic and all the fallout from that to the present day. Now, that's all improving right now, but it's improving for kind of all the wrong reasons. And so, you know, the fact that we're trying to fight inflation here is the only reason these rates are going up right now, which is kind of an interesting twist. So anyway, it gives you some perspective. The pool rate, when I started with you in this role back in late March, was 55 basis points. It's actually, as of June 27, they increased it to 1.15. And I would expect before I sit here again, they'll raise it one or two more times, probably. And the, you know, the events that drive the pools rate and the rate we pay for Treasury, you know, get on Treasury securities and things like that, it's all tied up in the Federal Reserve and the Open Market Committee and kind of what they're doing. And their next meeting is July 26 and 27. And everybody thinks they're going to raise rates by another 75 basis points. So be interesting to see if that really happens, because I think there's a lot of things going on in the market that might suggest that that's too much of a raise because of a potential recession that we may already be in. So be interesting to see if they stick with that. So again, that comes up in the next couple of weeks. So that's just some background on investments. And if you go to the, this horrid tiny little print listing of investments, I think it's about the third page in. Does everybody see that?
H84.
Everybody goes in to get their glasses. Yeah. Just interesting, if you look, four columns from the right, there's a column called YTM. Gosh, I can't even read it. Oh, yield to maturity is what that is.
Yield to maturity.
Okay. If you go down that list, and I'm sorry for the way these decimals show, but it's hard to find a yield to maturity on any of these securities that's over 1%. And that just shows you what we've been forced to buy over the last two or three years, you know, pandemic-wise. And, you know, you can find a few, but the ones you find, like about the 6th or 7th one down, 3.12, that was purchased in about July of 19 or June of 19. So anything purchased that far back was enjoying the rates that were available, as I was telling you earlier. So there's only maybe six or eight investments that are over 1%. And I've been in, I've made some investments since I've been here, and I'm mostly buying Treasuries and government securities. And we're getting about 3% at one and two years. So things have changed dramatically, but it'll take a long time for that to kind of take hold in terms of the performance of the portfolio. Because you basically have three years' worth of stuff that has to roll off and get replaced with something higher. So be interesting to see how long these rates continue at this level. And whether we can really, over the next several years, replace securities with more of this 2% and 3% type of return. And again, we're not taking a lot of risk to get that. We're, these are Treasuries, that's about as vanilla a risk as you can get. So. And very interesting, this whole kind of portfolio management piece I've just gotten into in the last maybe three or four weeks to kind of see where we are. And it's fascinating all the changes that have taken place. Does anybody have any questions on any of that from a portfolio?
The very last one says Apple Incorporated, and it says a yield 1.45. It's at the very bottom.
Yeah.
So is that an Apple note, then?
It's a corporate bond that Apple issues, and we're allowed to buy some corporate debt. So it's just like a government debt, only it's a corporate, so we look more at the rating than we would otherwise. But, yeah, and you'll find a lot of, we own a lot of banking institution debt, you know, bonds.
Yes.
And financial securities firms, some manufacturing, those are all corporate debt. We're limited to 25% of the portfolio on corporate debt. So the state recognizes that that's a riskier side of the portfolio, so it greatly limits what your exposure is to that. Any other questions on that? Okay, so.
I wish we had borrowed more money during that period, but we did do some really good refinancing.
Yeah.
Efforts, so.
So if you go to the next page, Position Control, this just gives you a look at where we are position-wise. And we added 911. And, you know, Commissioner, when you made that comment sometime, a couple of weeks ago.
Yes.
I was surprised that it wasn't on there, because it used to be on there. So I don't know what, I don't know what happened to it, but it's back.
Well, it disappeared, because I went back and did that, all the research, just the, when I, when it disappeared. And we're, because we're always talking about 911 and how critical it is to have that team staffed as much as possible. So glad to see it's back there.
The only thing I could think of is that it was determined to be a special district and therefore different somehow. But to me, it's, it's just another department to you all, really. So seems like it ought to be there.
Yes.
And I just call your attention to the unfilled percentage down at the bottom through May, 10.69%, 127 positions. If you look over the history, that percentage hasn't changed all that much over the past year, although the number is different because we've added some positions and a lot of those are perhaps still vacant. So any questions on that?
Has really, it has stayed 10, 11%, and it's down to nine at one, one month, or 9.75. So, yeah, it's, it's way up there. Just listening to the community, the market in Sisters said, people now work for one week and they quit. They used to work for two weeks. And somebody was trying to go out to dinner the other night, and every restaurant was closed because they didn't have staff. So it's, you know, it's, it's interesting what's going on in the community.
I think a lot of folks were thinking a year or so ago that that was a really temporary problem, and it's kind of shown itself to be a much longer-term issue.
Right.
Which I think makes it that much more perplexing, like, how do you solve this?
Truly, it does.
Interesting. Okay, so now, if you go to the, after all the graphs, you start seeing all the tables of all the funds. There's a summary that starts that called Budget to Actuals, Countywide Summary, All Departments. Everybody see that? It's two pages. And I just wanted to mention that if you look down the projection column, there's a percentage there. And if you just ignore resources and start down at the requirements, you can see a number, there's probably five or six of these on here that are over 100%. So that's a projection. And that projection was done in early June, based on the May information. And so not only do you have the, the May year-to-date expense and the budget to actual for May, you can see the projection. So, and if you look down at those that are at or over 100%, those all got taken care of in the budget adjustment that you all did on June 22. Now, it's a pretty large fiscal year '22 budget adjustment resolution. Probably the biggest one of those was the self-insurance, health insurance fund. And we've all talked about why that, kind of, where that came from. And it's really, you know, we haven't raised the rate to departments for a couple of years, and we've seen pretty steady usage by employees. And this is kind of the post-pandemic, I've got to go get this taken care of, issue, I think. And I don't know how long that will last. Hopefully, this really is just a blip in the curve. But that's the most significant one by far. The rest of them are kind of ordinary and happen from time to time. So.
Wayne, I do have a question. On the American Rescue Fund, in budget, we have 38 million down, but it's actually 38,399,000. So I'm just wondering why that $399,000 wasn't listed?
Yeah. And I don't know if the total amount wasn't known at the time, you know, the exact dollars and cents, so to speak. The other thing is, this is the second year of budgeting for that. So, you know, we spent some of the money in the first year. So 38 million is probably, as an appropriation, exceeds what we have left to spend anyway. So it's probably not a big deal, that it's not exactly what our word was. But I'll talk to Dan about that, and maybe he's right behind me. But we can look into that and get back to you. So as I go through these, I don't really have any comments to make. The only one I would call your attention to, I was just doing some work on this today. If you go to the TRT Fund, which is a combination of Fund 160 and 170, and I don't know what page number you have. Everybody find that one okay? TRT? It's kind of right after the General Fund and the Juvenile Fund.
Page 93.
I think these are in fund order.
Page 93? 160, 170 Fund?
Yep, that's the one. So interesting, you can see our budget was 11 million. I'm looking at resources here. 11.6 million was the budget for room tax collections. Our actuals year-to-date through May were 12.2 million, and the projection is 13.5 million. Okay, so that projection, I think it's been 13.5 for a month or two. So maybe, that might have been April's projection as well, based on history, because it's been very robust. It's been like, you know, 18%, 15% above all the way through the year. So I just.
One month, like October.
Yeah, right. One of those months was off some. So I sat down with Judy in the Tax Office, who now manages this, and got her June numbers, which she hadn't sent out the report to you all for June yet. You should get that probably this week. But it's right about 13 million or 12.9 million through June. So it's off maybe 500 or 600,000 from what we had estimated a month and a half ago. And, you know, I sort of get the feeling just anecdotally that maybe occupancy is down some year over year, at least in the month of May and perhaps in June. So be interesting to see as we move into July, because July, August, and September are the big months of room tax collections, because that's, you know, June, July, and August stays. So the big summer peak is still yet to come.
So Wayne, what you're saying then is that the actual for the year is probably going to be closer to 13 million even, like half a million?
Yeah, or just under that, perhaps.
Under the projection?
Yeah.
Well, I know the people in Sisters this weekend, a lot of them were from Sacramento. So, you know, truly, yeah, room taxes.
Yeah, it's, it's very robust, if you look at historically, but may not overcome last year at this time, is kind of what I'm saying. And I think last year at this time was a, was totally unexpected by a lot of people. So I think this is still a great revenue source, and it's doing exactly what it ought to be doing, and it's very robust. It's just down a little bit from our expectation, which was kind of lofty to start with, perhaps.
Well, I mean, you know, we budgeted 11.6, and it substantially exceeds that.
Right, right.
And we, if, if you could put this information together with some of, some of the discussion we had during Budget, Budget Week, and the, and the transfer out that we, that we, that we made, you know, we decided to make for this, you know, the fiscal year we just started, do you have a, can you give us a sense of what the kind of, the unallocated, like, you know, where's our, where are unallocated TRT is showing up, probably with all the commitments that we made, plus, you know, all the, you know, plus, plus our best guess about, about revenue for this coming year?
I could certainly do that. And, you know, we, we just adopted a budget based on pretty much these projections. So even what we budgeted for the unallocated for '23 could, you know, it could end up a little less than we thought because of this. So, but we'll see. So we'll run some numbers and get something to you. The other thing I just wanted to mention on that is, we've sent the $4 million, the first $4 million for '23 to the Sun River Service District. And so that transfer got made, I think it was last week, or, yeah, last week, it was in last week's AP run. And I'm in conversation with a lady named Jana from the Trails Group. And there's a contract that's now been signed, and we're moving forward with them to work through the details of distribution. So just want to let you know those are underway.
Wayne, I do have a question about the property tax revenue current actually showed up more than what the projection was. It's showing up at 101%.
Where's this?
And the sheriff in 911, it's actually showing up like.
Yeah, 300.
It's over what they projected. I wonder, where is that extra money coming from?
Well, I think, remember, our estimates for property taxes were made before Scott comes out with his official assessed value rule. And so that, you know, that was done for fiscal year '22, back in '21 sometime. So.
Has that made it like 95% that we projected that it would be paying?
No, it, it's probably not the collection rate as much as it is just the growth in AV. We used an estimate, and then Scott does the real thing after the fact. So I think it's, it's just trying to peg that for each jurisdiction that we levy taxes for.
New construction and.
That's part of it.
Just.
Yeah, there's some assumptions made based on what we know. And remember the, well, yeah, I'll just stick with that. Any other questions on any of these budget to actuals?
The one I think it's good to point out is solid waste was projected at 95% when the year's complete was 91.7. So they're still running ahead as an economic indicator of what's happening in Deschutes County. So that's, I think, always a good number to look up. From CDD, it looked like they were very busy, too. They're running ahead.
Okay. Any other questions on any of this? Otherwise, I think we're pretty much wrapped up.
So you're, you're thinking that they aren't going to raise its point 75 basis points, then? You're thinking they might do 50?
Well, I'm just saying there's a lot of conversation in the market about what they're really going to do. They seem pretty locked into the 75 basis points. So I wouldn't be totally surprised if they just stick with that. And it'd be interesting to see if the market disagrees with that. We'll know about it pretty quick, you know, in the stock market or the bond market or somewhere. That'll, that would become known. But I would sort of expect the 75 basis points, but wouldn't be totally surprised if it was less than that.
Okay.
I mean, inflation is just getting, you know, the inflation reports, you know, the studies and all that, they're, every week, their, their estimates are more than the week before about what inflation really is. And so I think with that piling up, it's hard for the feds to back off of what they said they were going to do when they were looking at less inflation than they are today. So for that reason, I think they'll go for it and stick with that plan. And again, the Fed raising interest rates is kind of a blunt instrument. They don't have a lot of tools, and this is one they have that, you know, has been effective in the past, but it, it doesn't respond on a dime. So it'll be interesting to see how far they have to go before they realize they've gone too far. I mean, that's the danger, so.
And a dime isn't very big, is it?
It's not very big.
Okay.
Anything else?
This is great.
All right. Well, thanks for your time today.
Thank you very much.
And we'll get you something on the TRT. And let me know if you need anything else. Just send me an email if you think of something we didn't cover you'd like to know more about. Thanks.
No, thank you, Wayne. Thank you so much for being here.
Yep, good to be here. Thank you.
All right. I believe Laura, Scott, item number four, envision bend? Or is, yes, you and Dan.
Dan may be on Zoom today. I can go ahead and get started, though, if.
Please.
Board would like. -the board would like. Of course. So Laura Skundrick, Administrative Services. Today I'm bringing back a funding request that we had discussed a few weeks ago from Envision Bend for the Bend Vision Project. During our last discussion, the board had had some follow-up questions and asked that we return in a few weeks to discuss. So to provide some background on this request, it was for fifty thousand dollars to support the Bend Vision Project. This is described as a community-owned plan with a purpose to find a long-term vision for the community up to twenty-five years in the future, and the near-term actions needed to move the community in that direction. This will be done by bringing diverse stakeholders together to educate, engage, and empower all members of the Bend community to have a voice in the city's future. And once completed, the plan will be implemented by project partners across the whole community, including government, civic institutions, private businesses, civic organizations, nonprofits, and residents. So as of June seventh, Envision Bend had raised a hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, with fifty thousand dollars of that coming from the City of Bend. And Envision Bend plans to return to the City of Bend's Stewardship Committee this month for their second funding request as planned. So if the board chooses to support funding this project, or a portion of this project, staff would recommend the use of either video lottery dollars in support of the economic development objectives as outlined by Envision Bend, or by the General Fund, or some combination of both. So I will stop there, and if there are any further questions, happy to try to answer those.
Thank you. Did we expect Dan to be available?
Yes.
Okay, are we running ahead of schedule?
Well, we are, but are we, are we still recording, or?
I can send him a message. I believe we are a little bit ahead of schedule.
We are, on the calendar it said two PM.
So I still kind of struggle with this. We're doing a comprehensive plan at Deschutes County, doing transportation system plan, and, you know, the state legislature, governor's race, political's going on right now. Not that I'm against this effort, but hesitant to kind of dive in full speed ahead right now at this point in time. You know, delaying the effort for a year may be the way I would like to see it, just knowing that we're, as I say, Deschutes County's doing a comprehensive plan, and that's, that's exactly what we want to do, is see the big picture here. I'm just letting, you know, I'm kind of still there. I haven't really changed my mind on it.
I would just say, our comprehensive plan kind of senses the community, understands what their, what their hopes and dreams are for our community, and then shapes our work. But a community vision is not just, isn't necessarily tell us what we're supposed to do. It's supposed to surface what the community wants, and then help to bring people together, all sorts of different people and organizations together to make it happen. So, you know, I do think that this is a pretty different thing than a comprehensive plan, and I think that there's incredible value in investing in a community vision, so I'm supportive of making this investment.
Dan, did you want to join us?
Sure.
Thank you so much. We're actually running ahead of schedule.
Yes.
At least for that moment. That just did happen. Okay, it's been suggested that if we do any of this funding, we could either use video, video lottery dollars, or General Fund, or a combination? Dan, what is your, what is your research telling us?
Video lottery.
And we have, what kind of a reserve do we have in video lottery funds at the moment?
I'll have to look that up. I actually think it's going to change a little bit since budget. I think we actually have a little bit more funds, but I believe it was in the six hundred, seven hundred thousand range before budget, so I'll take a look and be able to get that back to you.
That's a pretty, that's a helpful number, thank you.
But you think we have more though than the six or six to seven hundred thousand now?
I do believe so. That was one of the minor changes we had to make between the approved budget and the adopted budget.
Okay. All right. So Commissioner DeBon, you really think we need to hold off on this for a while?
I'm just sharing my thoughts on it. I mean, you know, if you guys want to, you know, as I say, we're all independent commissioners here.
I mean, we don't really have the option of holding off, because they'll be done with the project by a year from now. We can either, we can either make an investment and support them doing the work at the biggest scale with the most impact possible, or we can, or we cannot. You know, that would be another, another aspect in which this is, this is different than our comprehensive plan effort. That really is a process whose schedule is driven by us, and since this is a community vision, and Envision Bend has spent so much time building momentum among so many stakeholders in the community, you can't, can't just time that out right at this point. We, you know, the other thing I would say is that we have made, we have made investments in visioning work in other communities in, within the county, and seen, I feel like very good results from those, you know. Again, the, the goal of these community visions is to help to elevate the things that, you know, large percentages of the population want to see happen in their community, but which are maybe too complex for any one individual organization to do on their own, and that really need a number of different partners to come together. And, you know, doing these visions and signaling that those are the things that the community cares about the most, it really helps to invite that participation by a number of partners to make some of these big complicated things happen, or to give them momentum.
And just to get back to your question, Commissioner Chang, one is approximately one million dollars in contingency for fiscal year twenty-three in the video lottery after the commitments we made a couple months ago at this point in time.
You say one point three?
One million, approximately one million dollars, about one point oh three.
One point oh three.
Okay, so that, you're saying it's like four hundred thousand more than we were expecting?
I think it was in the range of about three hundred thousand, more than we had anticipated.
And Laura, you said that the City of Bend has made, has contributed fifty thousand dollars towards this effort already, and that Envision Bend is going back to them to make an additional request?
Yes, and that was part of their plan, was to make that initial request, receive that fifty thousand dollars, and then come back and show kind of what they had done, and show their track record, and then make an additional request.
For another fifty thousand?
That I don't know what their request will be at this time, but I'm happy to find that out.
Don't they have a press conference maybe tomorrow afternoon?
They do. Yeah.
But we don't know how much they're going to ask for?
Well, the, the press conference is about kind of the, the launch of the visioning effort. It's not about, it's not specifically about, you know, the, their funding level, you know, different, different sponsors' funding levels. Although I'm, I'm, I would hope that entities that sponsor the Envision Bend effort are going to get recognition tomorrow.
Yes, I believe they just started their public phase, so they're starting with their outreach kind of events, actually, today, I believe, is the kickoff, so I would assume that's what the press conference is about.
Okay.
So if we want to be recognized as a sponsor, we probably have a few hours to make that
So just a follow-up, Commissioner Adair says when they return with their second request, it would be equivalent to half the cost of the project. So I don't know what that exact number is, but that's how they described it. So I'm happy to follow up if needed.
When they go back to the City of Bend?
They're going to ask for half?
That would be equivalent to half the cost of the project, yes.
We have that number here somewhere. So they're saying three hundred thousand. The total cost of the project is approximately three hundred thousand. So does that mean then they're going to ask for another hundred thousand from the City of Bend? So that'll cover half the cost of the project?
I, I don't know for sure, but I'm, I'm happy to ask that question. Because it seems that they, that may be the case, but I don't-
That's the case, then, maybe, you know, we can get by with a smaller donation? You say they're in that a hundred and sixty-two thousand now? So, and only fifty came from the city, so that means they've claimed a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred privately. So if, maybe we can do like twenty-five thousand now and find out if that's going to work.
I would support that, and, you know, approving a hundred, approving twenty-five thousand now, and then leaving the door open to, to come back when they understand what gaps are remaining. I could make a motion if-
Okay.
-there's no more discussion. I move allocation of twenty-five thousand dollars of video lottery funding to support the Envision Bend project, and with the, with the opportunity to return again when they have a better sense of their final budgetary needs, to make another request.
Okay, so I'll second that. So that, if they're really going to get half of it from the city, then that would put them at like two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, and they get some more private funding, the county might not have to jump up on that. Okay. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
No.
And the chair will vote yes.
So as I say, I wish them the best. It's not, I'm not against the project, just funding it from the county point of view.
Well, if we just fund it with twenty-five thousand, and they actually raise money privately, I think that's, I think that's more respectful of all the demands that we have in Deschutes County.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Okay, so now we have your very favorite discretionary grant review.
With this beautiful prepared binder.
All right. So Commissioners, as you know, each quarter, the Board of Commissioners reviews applications submitted to the Deschutes County Discretionary Grant Program and makes awards accordingly. Today, the Board will consider requests made for activities to take place beginning on or about the first quarter of the new fiscal year 2023. So we can get started and make our way down the list if you'd like. The first request is from the Boys and Girls Club. They are requesting two thousand five hundred dollars for further security upgrades to their downtown Bend location, including an electronic door strike at the front entrance, and installation of interior locks to the mission support offices, ensuring that all their doors lock from the inside for additional safety. Last quarter, you may remember, we did provide them a grant of five hundred dollars for kind of a similar request that they had made, but they continue to need funding for the ongoing kind of projects.
We did it eighteen hundred dollars the quarter before.
That's correct.
Yes, so, well, considering some of the security issues in, in Bend, I'm happy to do five hundred again.
I'll do eight hundred.
Sorry, I can't see the screen.
Is it pretty teeny? There it is!
From my point of view-
Now you know what it's like to be over fifty.
What was that?
Now you know what it's like to be over fifty.
Thank you for that. All right, let's see if I can get there now. Sorry, Commissioners?
That's okay.
Okay, Commissioner Adair?
I said five hundred.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. DeBon said eight hundred.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll say six.
Okay.
Six hundred.
All right, thank you. So next up, we have the Companion Animal Medical Project. They are requesting one thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents to purchase marketing material as outlined in the application for community and outreach
I'm used to this group showing up in the spay and neuter grant pool, where I think, which I think is a very appropriate place for, for them to be, and we did make an investment recently, but, you know, I can, I can see some value in making an additional investment in outreach and marketing material. So I, I would say, please put me down for two fifty.
Thank you, and thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Chang. They did apply for the 2022 spay and neuter grant process, which we are currently receiving the reviews from the dog board, and so that will be coming back to the Board for review.
So when will that come back?
Then the next week. It should be next week. I'm waiting for one more review.
Okay, so next week? So they could be getting funding for that? Okay.
That's correct.
There's maybe an opportunity to fold this in somehow with the, you know, the joint office and homeless in the big picture, as in, we've got a lot of service providers doing a lot of things out there, and there may be coordination that could happen in the near future. So as I say, I'm happy to get them some money. I'd like to, you know, make sure they're plugged in and coordinated with all efforts.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that they've been an active participant in the Homeless Leadership Coalition, and I would certainly expect them to engage as opportunities present themselves in the advisory, in the advisory and public components of the joint office, the coordinated
Yeah, I'm just throwing out ideas, just because the homeless, there's going to be a different mode at some point, maybe, where, you know, we're doing different things, I guess. You know, I don't know what the future brings, but I mean, we're trying to set up for a different, different result instead of watching it grow. So it's just thinking out loud as I say that, so is there, you know, a point in time where we can help?
I mean, in the, in the foreseeable future, what the Coordinated Response Office is doing is planning, right? And so I certainly hope that this, this dimension of homelessness, you know, people's security animals, and, and, you know, their companion animals is, I hope that that shows up in the plan, like as some kind of sub-action, or, you know, you know, like, single item on the, in the action plan, or, or what have you. But the Coordinated Response Office isn't going to be fixing the need for more awareness and outreach for this organization in the near future. So, you know, the opportunity we have right now is to invest or not.
I would like to make my determination after we come up with our spay and neuter grant funding, and then, you know, if they've, you know, if they've received one of the maximum funds from that one, then maybe I won't. But if they haven't, then if you can reach back with me after we get those?
Yeah, what time, what timeframe is that then?
Next week.
So that will be coming to, it should, yes.
Yeah, she's going to be on our agenda next week.
So do we want to just hold this?
Well, I think it might be smartest. Let's hold it.
Yeah, we could bring it, yep.
Thank you.
Because if it's not, if it's next week, that's not very far.
All right, thank you. Next up is Council on Aging. They're requesting one thousand nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-six cents for their hot, cold meal delivery equipment, specifically to electro- cold meal delivery equipment specifically to electro, electric hot box meal carriers, um, that would keep food hot while they're delivering. Um, and one, um, one piece of funding that's obviously not on your materials is the ARPA contribution that you made to Council on Aging of, I believe, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars.
Yes, that's what it was. Really good.
Let's see, Q1, Q2.
There's a lot of support, yes.
I love it.
And they're also a service partner, and they're getting forty-two, five.
That's right.
Well, I'm, I'm still supportive, especially an amount of, uh, in this area of two thousand dollars, you know, in the big picture, so I'll do a third of that, or however we wanna, if, yeah. Twelve, eight, seven.
So, how much are you going?
Seven hundred dollars. I rounded up a third.
Okay. And I'll do five hundred.
I, I, I think this is a great organization doing such important work for our community, but, um, given the very frequent quarterly contributions plus the ARPA, plus the service partner funding, I, you know, I, I'm thinking two fifty here.
That'll get them somewhere.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, Earthwind is requesting two thousand five hundred dollars, um, to support the Earthwind Challenge. They engage middle and high school students to create a project for their school that impacts their school, community, and planet in a positive way. You may remember last year, um, Earthwind had applied for a grant, and, um, in, in follow-up to that, you had asked that the owner, um, the founder come in and give you a presentation, and so he, um, he did that, and, um, I believe there were, the board's questions, um, kind of addressed the Earthwind's partnerships with the schools and kind of whether they were working in conjunction, together and potentially duplicative services, so, just a quick reminder about that.
You know, I, I definitely appreciated the, um, Mr. Traubert, to, coming in and giving us a presentation and, and giving us some background, but I, um, what the, the specifics on kind of what he's, what he's doing with which specific schools and which specific, you know, classrooms, it, it wasn't super specific during his presentation, and then definitely there was no specifics in this, um, in this application, so I'm, I'm still not feeling like, not feeling like I have heard clearly from, you know, a particular school or, or a particular school district that this is a partnership that they're, um, that they really value and are super excited about, so I, I, I'm just knowing how much other, you know, how many other, uh, you know, special initiatives there are for, for kids in our schools, I'm not, I, I'm, I, I don't really want to make an investment right now in this.
I'll skip it also.
Uh, it is interesting, Laura, to note that their letter from the IRS says that their effective date of ex, um, their exemption is from April twenty-seventh of fifteen, yet their letter, they, um, you know, addressed to you, said August fifteenth, twenty seventeen, but their, um, IRS letter says something different. So, it's just kind of interesting.
It's better than earlier than later, though.
Yeah, that's true. That, that is true. I just kind of thought, whoa, okay, uh, yeah, perhaps maybe we need to, I don't know, I don't know if he's gonna wanna come back, but anyway.
Well, it sounds like kind of the same feedback, similar feedback that you had given last year, so.
Just a, just a letter from a school that said, yeah, we're, you know, we did this, we did this program with this contest, and it was great and had these effects for our kids, or, like, you know, it's, it's hard to hear secondhand from someone that, that schools are very excited about their program.
It's not like he's gonna go on a fabulous vacation for twenty-five hundred dollars, but, um, yeah, you're, it's a good idea if we could hear from some schools that he has worked at.
Of course. Alright, so next is El Cai Woods Town Homes at Widgee Creek. They're requesting two thousand five hundred dollars for their firewise endeavors. Um, they would remove flammable fuels surrounding the townhomes, remove ladder fuels, and increase outreach and education for best practices. Um, I did connect this applicant with our county forester, Ed Keith, and he was able to provide them, um, some great information about their upcoming fuels reduction grant program, that he's currently working toward, uh, with the video lottery allocation from the board for this coming fis, this fiscal year. Um, so we suggested to the applicant that their project may be a good fit for that opportunity, and I believe they're planning to apply for that.
Okay, because I was wondering why it was in here, because I thought that's where it should be.
They chose to apply to both.
We found the form, filled it out.
That's right.
But yeah, good, so let's get it through.
I would agree with those comments, and I, I think it belongs much more in that pool than it does here.
Yep.
I mean, we wanna be very encouraging for people, of people to, to do the work, but, um, ask for money in the right places.
Perfect.
And truly, we want to help them with what, you know, the firewise endeavors
Yeah.
offers, so, yeah, thank you for applying.
Yeah, yeah, and you allocated the hundred thousand dollars.
How soon will, how soon can they get funding through Ed's, through what Ed advised them on?
Um, I don't know that he gave them a specific date. Um, I do believe he was working towards this month or next month opening the program. So, I don't know what the timeline is.
Okay. Now, where's the Family Kitchen?
Alright, thank you. Uh, Family Kitchen is requesting two thousand dollars for their free meal program, currently serving an average of eighty-eight hundred meals per month, uh, serving those who are house, houseless, in low-income housing, unemployed, um, and no one gets turned away when they receive, uh, request a meal. After these binders were put together, we received their fiscal sponsor information, which is Trinity Episcopal Church in Bend, and we did receive their confirmation as a nonprofit.
Okay, so you do have that. Thank you very much.
Yes.
When did they get their 501(c)(3) ruling?
Said they're associated with the church and their nonprofit status?
Yes.
So, probably back in a hundred years ago.
They have a, they said they started in like nineteen eighty-six, where this program.
But Trinity Episcopal, if they're, if they're the acting under Trinity Episcopal's 501(c)(3), that's a pretty old church. Or congregation.
Um, I'm happy to look that up and.
Okay, I just was wondering. Okay, thank you so much.
Six hundred for me.
And I'll do seven hundred.
He's put me down for seven fifty, or, wait, to get to two thousand, we only need seven hundred.
Right, seven hundred.
Seven hundred.
Look at that, see how, see how I led the show and spent less than a hundred.
Perfect, thank you.
You're ahead of us now.
Uh, next is Lapine Community Kitchen requesting two thousand five hundred dollars for their general operations of their hot meals program. They also in, uh, provide clothing, bedding, uh, monthly shower trucks, uh, free clothing for job interviews. This would just help support all those programs.
I was able to go talk to their, uh, one of their board members and their, uh, their director recently, and, um, he said that, well, they were asking for a big ARPA allocation, remember, and it wasn't gonna fit, so that's how I figured, I need to go talk to these guys. I told them that ARPA request, uh, wasn't gonna be funded, or, you know, we hadn't, hadn't decided to fund it, and.
It was to cover the, uh, wages.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, and I just let them know, because they had asked twice, and I said, I don't think this is happening, unless you two wanna do it, but, um, so after I spoke to them for a while, though, they said, one of the interesting statements is that the, the private donations had dropped off recently, you know, and that may be a function of the economy. Uh, so, I mean, I'm happy to support, uh, for this amount, but, I mean, that was just a statement she made in passing. So, I don't know if that's, we're gonna see that in other places, uh, you know, maybe in the near future or not, we'll see.
I'm, I'm hearing it from a number of nonprofits.
Yeah, good, I'm glad we're.
People's economic anxiety is making them hold.
Yeah, so people that would just, you know, write a check for a hundred dollars, kind of on a moment's notice regularly, or whatever, are not doing that all of a sudden, so that was interesting to hear.
And then I'm hearing that a lot of animals, pets are being turned in. Pet centers are like way over their capacity because people cannot afford them.
Yeah.
And I, you know, I saw that in my own cat food, when I couldn't find it, and then it was like double in price and, you know, yeah, so there's, there's a lot of things happening out there. So, they're asking for twenty-five hundred?
I'll do eight hundred.
So, you do eight, I'll do eight?
I'll, I'll do eight.
Alright, so we almost got to twenty-five hundred.
Thank you. Uh, next is the Lapine Rodeo Association, asking for two thousand five hundred dollars to support their Bucking for Hope event. This took place on July first, and they're requesting funds to help cover the cost of that event, um, which is one of the largest events in Lapine each year.
And if I was gathering correctly, Bucking for Hope is specifically, uh, to raise funds to support people who are injured or injured or, uh, you know, permanently disabled, uh, radio, rodeo, competitors? Is that, is that correct?
I...
This, I mean, this is a specific piece of, of the Lapine rodeo.
That's right.
Yeah, I don't have a, a feel for that. I mean, and I was there, but I don't have a feel for the.
Yeah, I was trying to, you know, I read all, I read all the stuff that, that was in the binder, and that was my best.
It does say here, specifically helps injured rodeo participants and their family. I donated all proceeds to them. That's in the, the letter. I know they have a post-playday series. They do a lot to bring the community together.
Uh, five hundred, so I've always, yeah, I'd like to support the finances of, of the rodeo.
I'll do five hundred also.
Can I, can I just double-check? Laura, you may or may not have this, this kind of information at your fingertips, but, um, you know, what I, what I was sympathetic to was, was having the event shut down for a couple of years because of COVID. Um, and so, I, you know, to, uh, and we had a lot of discussions with the Sisters Rodeo about this, but I don't know about the Lapine rodeo, whether, uh, whether they put in for assistance, business assistance through our COVID business assistance relief, uh, grant program.
I don't know the answer to that.
I don't believe they did.
I don't think so.
But we didn't, we didn't give any to the Sisters Rodeo either.
Did they even apply?
Yes, they did. They asked for a hundred thousand, and we didn't give them any funding.
And why was that?
You know, that's a really good question. I thought they were gonna fit in when we did everything through COIC, and it didn't happen.
Are you sure that they applied?
Uh-huh, they did apply. Oh, yeah, they're on our list. And that's where I thought their funding was gonna come out of.
Well, I, I mean, it seemed like the only, the only entities that were disqualified were able to, um, make up revenue in other ways so that they didn't show a, a revenue loss, so I'm curious about that. That'll just goes to say, I, you know, I, it's, you know, I'm not as interested specifically in contributing to the Bucking for Hope event, but, you know, just out of a general concern for all of these community event, you know, enterprises that lost funds during COVID, I would, I would support, uh, putting five hundred into, into this.
Thank you. Uh, next, Neighbor Impact is requesting two thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, these funds would support the design, printing, and mailing of the 2022 annual report, uh, which they expect to distribute about three thousand copies of.
One, one question I have about this is whether, um, you know, an annual report, in my mind, is a fundraising tool, primarily, and so, could, would this have been eligible for them to submit under the other, under the fundraiser, category instead?
Um, well, they do, so within the annual report, they do provide a, an area where you can send back, um, a donation, so I'm not sure would that qualify as.
I believe it would meet our criteria.
So, if the board would like, uh, we could, we could definitely move it down to that category.
I support that, and it's good to hear what they're doing. In fact, especially with the investments we made through ARPA and all the things happening, I bet they have a lot to share with the community.
No, I mean, that, you, no question, great organization, doing great work, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm interested in supporting this. I just think it, it might be a more appropriate thing to put under the fundraising.
Sure, so we have that fifteen thousand in the fundraising column, and then there's.
We'll move it down there.
Two other requests, um, and, would you like to address that when we get to fundraising?
Right, let's, can we do that then?
Yep. Alright, um, so then the next, uh, general request is from Prideville. Um, they're requesting five thousand dollars in support of Central Oregon LGBTQ-A plus awareness and support. These funds would be used for efforts such as hosting community events to bring people together, um, such as movie nights, festivals, and trainings, as well as, um, to purchase gear for those events. That would help to spread awareness about the community.
And they did talk about the, the June event that they, they held? I, I was actually curious, um, where, do we, do we know where that June event, um, was held?
I don't.
Within the Central Oregon region? I, uh, I wanna be parochial, but I kinda, I kinda want the money that we, we invest in, in, in groups to be spent in Deschutes County.
So, Laura, do you wanna find out where that event was held and?
I'm happy to, yes, yeah, it's not popping up here quickly for me, so I'm happy to follow up on that.
I'm not interested in investing at this time.
Okay.
I mean, we're not gonna come back to this, right, so, after today, so.
And we can come back, I mean, we can come back to it next week, because we're going to come back to the spay and neuter grant. We're gonna discuss it at that time, so.
Well, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I'm, I'm interested in making an investment. I just wanna know a little bit more.
Sure, okay.
You know, yeah, where, where their June event was and, um, where they pictured having, um, you know, some of these future e-events. Because, you know, their June event did already happen, so any, any funds that we provide, I would assume are not, they, they don't need for the June event anymore.
Okay, I'll plan to bring that back next week. Um, next, we have Thrive Central Oregon requesting one thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars. This would fund the addition of air conditioning units for the downtown Bend office, where they have about, uh, five to ten staff working Monday through Friday.
I'll do the four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Oh, I was making it easy.
I'll do five hundred.
I will do the other five hundred.
Thank you.
She jumped on that one.
I know, I was like, what could I do to make this easy for everyone? So, I'm, I'm eighteen dollars less. Gosh.
Commissioner DeBonne, when he jumped in, when he got, jumped on the six hundred out of the two thousand, he got, he got a better.
I got the deal, yep. And then that out of mount would drive me crazy for.
It's gonna be just fine. Gives me something to remember.
Good.
Alright, so, uh, jumping down to the fundraisers category, we have Hospice of Redmond requesting twenty-five hundred dollars for their Festival of Trees event this December. Um, this is Hosp, the Hospice of Redmond's major annual fundraiser, and they're holding the event this year at the Fair and Expo Center. Um, and grant funds would help them to offset the food and beverage costs there. And since these materials have been put together, we have received their confirmation of a nonprofit.
Good, and they're an amazing group, and Festival of Trees is such a historical, incredible. I mean, I was gonna try and buy a tree, and wow, those trees are expensive. So, anyway, I didn't get to buy any, but truly, uh, yeah, I love supporting them. I don't know if we can do the twenty-five hundred, that's what we have, we did twenty-five hundred, um, second quarter of twenty-two. I think it would be good.
I'm supportive.
We have, how, how much total for the year?
For fundraising, uh, fifteen hundred, or fifteen thousand, excuse.
Fifteen thousand. Now, we've already gone over budget at a thousand dollars.
Yeah, there's, and there's no, there's no kind of. Yeah, there's, and there's no, there's no kind of pattern to, I mean, people hold fundraising events throughout the year. It's not like they, they all come in in first half or anything, right?
Yeah, we see them pretty consistently. There's typically about one or two each quarter.
If we do all three, it's 7,000. So that's pretty significant of the 15. But, you know, if it works out, we can always, you know, add a bit more funding towards the end of year if something comes up.
I mean, I would support doing all three, but I, only if we're pretty comfortable with adding more as needed throughout this year.
I'm supportive of that, yeah.
Okay.
Because these are fundraisers of, of, you know, our known community partners and efforts around the community. There's the history with some of them. So, yeah.
Right, Mountain Star is, we are a service partner there. 21,600 we're giving, so yes. Oh, there was another error on their form that said the project period was 2021. So that probably needs to be updated.
Okay, thank you. So their request was for 2,000?
I support Mountain Star's request.
Okay, thank you.
And we're going to stick Neighbor Impact in there too.
And then, yep, back up to Neighbor Impact. I'll throw it up here in the, this column up here at 2,500, if the board is supportive of that. Okay.
Great.
All right. There we go. I will follow up with those few that we have questions on, and I'll see you next week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Actually, this one column, it should be 7,000 and not 8,000. Your column on the right?
I think that's what's remaining.
Oh, is that the remaining? Okay, all right, remaining dollars. Okay. All right, I was just like going, yeah, maybe if you can move that one down below the line so that it shows with fundraising requests, Laura, later, that would look cleaner.
Of course.
Thank you. All right. So do we have other items? No? Okay. Is there an executive session today, Dave? No. All right.
So a couple of things. I spoke to, and you might have seen in the email, so Jack Harville from the Source and Ben Bulletin, oh, no, the KBND Radio about the suicide discussion. Had somebody contact me and say, why are you going to outlaw suicide? And I said, no, no, we're talking about land use. You know, so some people really jump, kind of jump right to, you know, some political hot potato type stuff. We're just like, no, we're talking about land use here, associated with what the people voted on. So that'll be good for Wednesday for us to really get the facts out, hopefully more for the community.
And besides getting some facts out, it's, I think it will be a very good opportunity for us to, to hear from the community, how, what they, what they think about this issue.
Oh, yeah.
I'm really interested to see who shows up.
Last Thursday, Lapine Senior Center Annual Picnic Day. So it was at the senior center, but it was nice to see everybody there. It was well-attended. Everybody just having a, a nice lunch Thursday, July 7th. Just kind of looking back at my schedule. I think that's all I have.
And I have the Fair Association meeting tonight. So that should be interesting because we're getting really close to our, to Shu's County Fair and Rodeo. All right. So are we finished then? All right. I believe it's time to adjourn our meeting at 2:18. Thank you so much. We will be back in session. Please note that it's special time on Wednesday. We will not be meeting at 9:00 AM. We will start our afternoon session at 1:00 PM. So please, community, I hope, maybe, can we send out some special message on it, a tweet or something, so that people know, don't come in at 9:00. We won't be here until 1:00. And then we will have another session after the 1:00 PM meeting. We will, we'll recess until 5:30, I believe it is, 5:30 PM?
The public hearing's at 2:00.
Yes.
And then again at 5:30.
5:30 for the second public hearing. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thanks for getting the agendas together this week. I know.
I saw that email later, way later in the day about one of us to try to join.
Oh, yes, my jury duty. I got called in. Who would have thought?